If I may have your attention, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District to order. Tonight, we have a couple of special guests with us, and I'd like to ask Dr. Joe McIntosh to bring them forward and introduce them to us.
Thank you, President Appleman, and Chancellor Giavignini, and Board Trustees. I'd like to welcome, behind me here, really, a couple of guys that really need no introduction. They're longtime friends of Tarrant County College and Tarrant County College Foundation. Before I, though, introduce them, I'd like to introduce some of my colleagues. Mr. David Parker, Chairman of the Tarrant County College Foundation. And Ms. Janet Hahn, the Vice Chair of the Foundation Board. And then joining me also tonight, Liz Sisk, from the Foundation Office, who's done a lot of work on this project. Joining me tonight is Todd Ritter-Bush, and I had to ask him, so I didn't butcher this title, because, you know, bankers, they change their title all the time. Managing Director for Tarrant County, is with us tonight to make a very special presentation. And then his colleague, just a longtime friend, we see him in these halls of Tarrant County College all the time, Mike Wilson, is joining him tonight for this presentation. So, gentlemen?
And they're from Chase Bank.
Chase Bank, thank you.
The most important part, right?
Thank you very much, Joe. President Appleman, Chancellor Giavignini, Board Representatives, thank you very much for the invitation to be here tonight. It means a great deal to us. We are strong believers in the work that you are doing, and we are exceptionally appreciative of how hard and well you do that work every day. Creating greater economic opportunity for more people in Tarrant County and around the world is the defining challenge of our time, and there's never been a more stable or reliable path to prosperity than a good-paying job with the opportunity for advancement. That's why JP Morgan Chase has committed $250 million, including $7 million, in North Texas to our New Skills at Work Initiative. That's the largest investment any company has ever made to close the skills gap and help more hard-working people gain access to good-paying jobs that require more than a high school diploma but less than a four-year college degree. It is a pleasure to announce our latest initiative in partnership with you. The JP Morgan Chase Foundation is investing $250,000 in Tarrant County College Foundation in support of TCC's efforts to implement, across the college district, the Guided Pathways Model. This will help more students become aware of career opportunities and access the academic training pathway to get there. As part of this, TCC will be designing a new program training for cybersecurity. It will serve as the first program to model the guided pathways template. This could not be more pertinent. Cybersecurity is a threat nationally, locally, and internationally. We must have people trained to protect our businesses, our civic institutions, and our municipalities, and anyone else who uses technology. JP Morgan Chase recognizes the value of Tarrant County College, which is uniquely positioned to address the needs of students and our area's workforce. We are always glad to partner with TCC, and we welcome the opportunity to deepen our relationship with the college and the TCC Foundation through the provision of this grant. So now that I've read what I have to read, I just want to say thank you personally. I remember calling Dr. Giavignini, asking for ideas about what he thought would be most helpful to the community. He put this proposal together. I love the idea of the pathways. Working closely with the Fort Worth ISD, we see kids all the time who just waited too long to explore and understand what their options were, and as a result, missed opportunities. This will help to make sure that that doesn't happen, and we keep those kids on the right track as early as possible. Cybersecurity is incredibly critical to our organization. I suspect that we will end up hiring, at our own institution, a large number of the people who come through this program, because every day, we're getting hit with literally millions of attacks. And our ability to defend our clients against those attacks is obviously fundamental to our business. So, thank you for serving as the architects of this program. Thank you for your leadership within the community, and thank you for continuing to be such an efficient and effective partner in taking these sorts of grants and making a real difference with them. Thank you all.
Todd, Todd and Mike, if you all would indulge us, we are heavy into photographs around here, but would any of the board members like to comment or ask questions?
Just coincidentally, I recently, along with my husband, attended a three-day seminar on cybersecurity, and everyone from James Clapper to some FBI guys, and in San Antonio, they are doing, and I told Dr. Giavignini about this, and somewhere in this building is all the papers I brought back about it, and with all the names, and they invited us to consult with them. They are taking, they have formed a foundation and are taking a curriculum as low down as third and fourth grade, and then all through the middle in high schools. And so, of course, I thought, we need to be doing that in Tarrant County, not knowing any of this was going on. So, great minds and all of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Ayala, I saw you, did you want to say something?
Appreciate your partnership. It means so much to us, and I think it'll certainly help our community and our students. So, thank you for your consideration and your support.
Thank you.
Okay. Glenn, where would you like for us to be?
We stay put.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are the kids here?
Chancellor, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
It's just the beginning.
I hope, thank you. We'll have to have a meeting and share some of the ideas out of San Antonio. Everybody just come down, or they come up?
We all need to be paying attention to this, that's for sure.
You bet. They said it's not if, but when. Okay, sure.
We certainly want to thank Todd and JP Morgan Chase Foundation for the trust and confidence that you're placing in us to really try to make a difference in all the things that you said. Tremendous support on your behalf, we greatly appreciate it. Should be noted that a number of folks worked very, very hard in putting this proposal together, and the quality of that, I think, was reflected in your response, and so, thank you all.
All right. Are there any other public comments? Thank you. We like those public comments. Bring us more of those. All right, I would ask approval of the minutes of the January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting, which you should have received earlier. Motion to approve, Mr. Dr. Evans. And Dr. Morrison, seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are several reports tonight from the trustees, some of who've just returned, still a little bleary-eyed, probably, from three days in DC. But let me start. Yesterday, in the Star Telegram, they copied the collegian and announced Allison Hodges' award as the Pastry Chef of the Year of the Texas Chefs Convention, and she's on her way, I understand, as we speak, to possibly receive. She's a semifinalist for the American Culinary Federation two thousand and eighteen Pastry Chef of the Year Award. I'm going to write her a letter of congratulations from all of us and ask her to share samples to prove her worth. That sounds fair to me, don't you think? Yesterday, Jennifer Hawkins, our Corporate Solutions Lady, and I know she's in the room, where are you, Jennifer? Way in the back. Accepted on behalf of the Chancellor at the Workforce Solutions Board Meeting, the Outstanding Training Partner Award. And we, as you know, collaborate with several of the agencies and businesses in town in doing workforce training. But to my delight, there were six awards given, actually, seven, one to Lilly Biggins, we couldn't take any credit for that. But of the six, we were mentioned in five of them. And so, to Ms. Hawkins, Dr. Hawkins and her team, thank you for keeping us out there in the forefront. All right, Dr. Evans, you want to start with a report on your time in Washington, DC?
Sure. I was drafted today to give the report first. We attended the American Association of Community Colleges Association of Community College Trustees Annual Meeting, and in this particular meeting, our job is to advocate on behalf of our community colleges, and of course, in this particular legislative session as well, our students. And we have several priorities, things that we talk to our representatives about. We had the opportunity to be an audience with Senator John Corning, Representative Joe Barton, Kay Granger, Kenny Merchant, Roger Williams, Michael Burgess, and Mark Vici are their representatives. And the things, of course, that we highlighted ourself, had to do with the reauthorizing of the Higher Education Act, and there are a couple of planks, if you would, in regard to the things that we thought that were very important. One is, we thank them for their work regarding the Pell Grants and extending them to year-round use, and we're also, we took the time to ask them to even expand and allow the use of the Pell Grants to grow, and to be used more so for short-term workforce development programs that allow students to quickly and cost-efficiently increase their skill levels and earning potentials. And we received, I think, quite a bit of, quite a few head nods in that regard. The other was risk sharing. We oppose additional federal financial assessments levied on institutions that are based on borrowing student aid or educational outcomes. What they were proposing and are proposing to do is to levy, I call it somewhat of a tax on the college, and that would be that if students did not complete or complete their terms, we have to pay X amount of dollars back. Well, under the new proposal, a student can complete up to ninety-nine percent of their time in our colleges, in our college, rather, and then if they don't make it, if they drop out at that last day, we would still be levied a twenty-five percent, I call it a tax. We'd have to give back twenty-five percent of those dollars that they receive through the Pell Grant and through loans or what have you. So, of course, we asked them to rethink that, and we thought that the present system is fair and equitable in that regard. The other thing that, of course, we talked about, I think, the elephant in the room, of course, was DACA. Two, a representative, Republican and Democrat, all of them agreed that legal status should be given to those students, to those young people in particular. What we ran into, of course, is the partisanship, partisan politics. But Joe Barton, of course, Republican, on his way, of course, he's on his way to retirement. But one of the things that he said, I think, that was quite promising, is the fact that he signed on to all the bills, and they recognized that it is too expensive to even consider deporting all of those individuals. And of course, we agreed with that, and we're all pressing that, again, that they would take care of our students in particular. So, there were other issues that we talked about, for the most part, other priorities that we had, but those were the ones that we highlighted during our visits. And that's my three points in a poem, so I'm going to defer to my colleagues to wrap that up for me.
Dr. Patcher?
I think that our trip was very productive, and as Dr. Evans described, we met with our representatives, and to a person, whether it was staff or the representatives themselves, they were big supporters of Tarrant County College. That was obvious, and it was an easy sell in that regard. But we did talk to them about specific issues, such as those that you mentioned, and also the issue of the nomenclature, as is associated with apprenticeships, and we talked about the importance of broadening that definition, because there are many varieties on that internship, whether you call it that, or do you call it earned to learn? And so, we urged them to work on broadening that definition. We also had the opportunity to hear, at a general session, Secretary of Labor Acosta, and he talked about the importance of alignment of the community college and the workforce needs. And we said to ourselves, we've got this. We have an on-demand system that is aligned with workforce needs. So, it was a very productive visit.
Thank you. Mr. E.
Yeah, in addition to that, there's a couple of things that they told us to watch out for, and that was, they said that a lot of the people on the Hill just don't fully understand still what community colleges do. And my impression was, I think, the legislators did, but some of the staffers, who are very important people in doing what they do, did not know. We had two really good examples. One was Mark Vici's staff person, and I asked her, you know, what do you know about community colleges? Well, she said, I graduated from TCC. So, she said, I know a lot about community colleges, and then she graduated from University of Texas, and then she went on and got a master's. She was real sharp, she knew exactly what we were all about, what our mission is.
There she is. There she is, right there.
Yeah, that's her. And then we went to Kenny Martian's office, and the staffer there, like most of us, graduated from a four-year school, had no idea what community colleges were. So, we kind of filled her in on some of those things and handed out one of these cards, which are just absolutely fantastic. The other thing we got, we had a real good presentation, I think, by Amy Waters, Walters. She's a journalist, and she kind of gave us a balanced view of what's going on in the government, and it's very fractious, it's very polarized, but she said, this isn't something that just happened in the last year or so. It's been going on for twenty years. It's been trending in this way. And one of the results of that is that people don't think as much of higher education as they used to. But in the same vein, they don't think as much of the police force, or the government, or other institutions that, when we grew up, we respected, and so forth. And so, this is a trend, to speak. She kind of blamed the technology and all the things that you can read on the Internet and this kind of thing, some of which are true, but a lot of which is not true, and it causes polarization. So, and she said, the government is very fractious right now, and she doesn't see any opportunity for much improvement. I mean, that's probably the way we're going to be in this society for some time. And in that regard, I took a look at our board. We have Republicans and Democrats and all kinds of characters on this board, but we're all working in the same direction. I mean, it's amazing. You have a good board up here, and we're all working together regardless of where we came from and our thoughts and so forth. So, I'm proud to be on the board, so that was my take. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greenhill?
I too believe it was a very, very successful trip. As you say, we met, as everybody said, we met with all of our representatives, and I was, I really came out with the impression, a better impression of how things work up there, even if they do work. The difference between the House of Representatives and the Senate, I got the impression, and I think many people may know this anyway, but the Senate is more, because of their rules, have to work more closely together to make things work, to go across the aisle, so to speak. Of course, there are some that do not reach out, but I got the impression that the Senate really, really works out, works harder to, or can work harder to be collaborative. The House of Representatives, of course, now votes as a block, no matter what, apparently. This is what's happening. So, that was a good education for me. We also had some, we had Jake Tapper, who maybe not, according to Conrad, did not give us a balanced approach. I think he's with CNN, but it was very interesting. We had some very, very good speakers who gave us their impressions of what was going on. I thought, I appreciated that from everybody's view. We had a guy that talked about data, and he couldn't answer a lot of questions about the future, but he, you know, gave us data about what was that, one of the analogies was Ms. Walker. Was it Ms. Walker? Who said, we made, not an empirical analysis of how people voted. This was kind of funny, someone's got to correct me here, but it was a division between who was eating at the Cracker Barrel and who was at Whole Foods. And it was the Democrats who, no, the Republicans were those that ate at the Cracker Barrel. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
And the Whole Foods was the Democrats. And so, she said, it was pretty, you know, pretty well down the line, and it really sounded like it was going to work, but I thought that was a very excellent analogy. Conrad, do you have a comment on that? I think, I think that's what she said.
Yeah, she said, historically, back when Starbucks was brand-new, that wherever Starbucks were, that's where the Democrats were. They would win that precinct or that area. But now Starbucks is everywhere, so now they go in a Cracker Barrel and Whole Foods, and it pretty well works out.
But it was fun. I mean, it was...
The, the House of Representatives, of course, now votes as a block no matter what, apparently. This is what's happening. So that was, that was a good education for me. We also had some, we had Jake Tapper, who maybe not according to Conrad, did not give us a balanced approach. I think he trapped, he's with CNN, but it was very interesting. We had some very, very good speakers who gave us their impressions of what was going on. I thought, I appreciated that from everybody's view. We had a guy that talked about data, and he couldn't answer a lot of questions about the future, but he, you know, gave us data about what, what was that? One of the, one of the analogies was Ms. Walker. Was it Ms. Walker?
Yeah.
Who said, "We made, we made not an empirical analysis of how people voted." This is kind of funny. Someone's got to correct me here, but he, it was a division between who was eating at the Cracker Barrel and who was at Whole Foods. And it was the Democrats who, no, the Republicans were those that ate at the Cracker Barrel. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
And the Whole Foods was the Democrats. And so she said, it was pretty, you know, pretty well down the line, and it really sounded like it was going to work. But I thought that was a very excellent analogy. Conrad, do you have a comment on that? I think, I think that's what she said. I cannot...
Yeah, she said historically, back when Starbucks was brand-new, that wherever Starbucks were, that's where the Democrats were. They would win that, that precinct or that, that area. But now Starbucks is everywhere, so now they go in a Cracker Barrel and Whole Foods Foods, and it pretty well, it pretty well works out.
But it was fun. I mean, it was different speakers, and there are different points of view. It was a lot of fun. As, as we were saying, if we don't listen to what everybody's saying, we can't make a, 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 a good decision on things. So I think you said that. So, anyway, thank you.
Well, thank all of you for going. Those can be killer trips, and thanks to Mr. Gates and the Chancellor for chaperoning you. Mr. Greenhill, you...
Oh, yeah, I wanted to make, I'd like, we'd also, I'd like to make a shout-out to Maria over here. We wanted to do that. Thank you, Maria. She put together an awesome agenda for us, everything. The issue was, we had, we had Reginald there, we didn't know how to push the buttons right, but anyway, we, we didn't get lost many times. But Maria had it all organized and gave us a great booklet, and we knew exactly who we were supposed to be. I just wanted to make, our, our in-house lawyer is, Angela is the chair of the, I've got to get these, the Texas Community College Association of, what, Texas, Texas, Texas Association of Community College Lawyers. She is the chair of this organization. And she invited me and Roberto Zarate and Jacob Farrar, who is the head of the Texas Association of, of TCC, the Texas Community, Texas Association of Community Lawyer, I mean, Community, well, whatever it is. But we went down to make a speech, to make a bill and a panel, to talk about advocacy. And we had, the lawyers were there, we had teachers there, we had administrators there, we had all kinds of people there, and it was about advocacy. The point being that we are all working together. Your association, the Texas Association of Community Colleges, of teachers, was represented there. There are all kinds of people who were there who want to get involved in advocacy for our community colleges. So I want to make a shout-out for, for your work. And what we're going to do is try to get some lawyers and other administrators here for our, our June first meeting of the CCATT, and work together specifically. We need lawyers and other people who know how to draft legislation in a hurry. So that's my report.
Thank you. Dr. Morrison, you wanted some time?
I do. Thank you so much. I just want to share a little excitement from my journey for the trustees. We reached a milestone in our family yesterday, February 14. Griffin Ross Morrison turned six months old. He can take all the tissues from a box. He can say, "Dada." He loves to giggle and smile. So I just thought I'd share a little excitement with you. And today was National Signing Day for Career Technical Education. Thanks to the communications staff, I got an email, I mean, everybody did, and I looked at it, probably particularly because I am a CTE educator, I'm a certified CTE teacher. So I wove it into my schedule to wander over to South Campus and participate with them. I wanted to share some of the excitement from today. So this puts CTE on parity with Academic Signing Day and, of course, Athletic Signing Day. We have, this was the first group. These are all HVAC students who are committing to complete their certificate or their degree in their chosen field. So all of these young people, well, no, I would say all of these students, who were truly reflective of our population, each came forward, introduced themselves, and shared a little bit of their story, and had their signings today. So it's quite exciting. I was very happy to be a part of that. As you can see, all the smiles. And I, I believe I got to tell them one of the reasons that I've done this for 42 years. This young man is a TCC alum, well, former student. His name is Jim Wells. He, from '98 to 2000, he was a student on South Campus. He said he thinks he qualified for a degree, but he never applied for it. He went on to Sam Houston, went to work for Lennox, and he now is the sales leader for a $100 million team, and he works for Train, T-R-A-N-E. So he was able to share with the students his journey. That was quite interesting and exciting. So I was happy to meet him, and I wanted to share that. Dean Guines did a wonderful job with the program today. I know there was a lot of people who put effort into it, and I wanted to thank them for that. We might be on the Channel 33 news, and I know it was live-streamed. I always like when TCC is a part of a national trend, because we are a trendsetter, right? And thanks to all of our wonderful staff and our Chancellor for keeping us up with the times. Thank you for letting me share that excitement with you. Oh, and your hats are in the mail. The hats and shirts, they were going to bring them, they didn't get to bring them, so I promise you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Heath, one more thing.
Well, actually, two things. One, as you know, that TCC and Tarleton are doing lots of things in partnership with each other. And for those of you who are not fortunate enough to be subscribers of the Comanche Chief Newspaper...
Okay.
I just wanted to show you that there's an article in, one I just got today, Tarleton and TCC are co-hosting a history symposium highlighting the year 1968 on Trinity River Campus on February 23rd and 22nd. So just another example of the partnership between Tarrant County College and Tarleton. And I wanted to talk a little bit, I was very fortunate and very honored to be asked by the Foundation to be part of the, the team that went to the symposium in Los Angeles by the AGB, which is the Association of Governing Boards, that, that addresses the things that the foundations across the country should be practicing, the best practices, just as we do in our, in our conferences. And it's, it's, this is no surprise, but best practice should, that the board, the Foundation Board should have a three- to five-year strategic plan, which is in the process right now. And that leads to an annual business plan and specific goals to accomplish, and to use the best practices and policies as, as promoted by that association. One thing that, that I got out of this that was also echoed at the, in the Washington Summit was that higher education is, is not viewed as, as favorably as it used to be. In fact, what, you have to understand that this group was mostly four-year colleges, so we got a taste of what they go through, but higher education, the approval rating is, is down. And, and of course, I don't, I don't believe that so much for community colleges. I don't think we're in the same category, because we do so much things that are, where the rubber meets the road, as opposed to higher education and four-year schools. But they said the approval rating of higher education is down because there is more scrutiny by donors. Foundations and institutions need to be perceived, and actually are, should be, well-run businesses, efficient, transparent, and trustworthy. Donors are looking at need and impact when they make their contributions to the foundation. They also mentioned, and of course, we all know this, that higher ed needs to be, prepare students for not just their first job, but their career, for a productive life and career, to learn critical skills, critical thinking, and be a lifelong learner. You know, the same subjects that we, we promote. They need to promote student success, yes, but the, when we're trying to raise money for the foundation, not only talk about individual student success, which is what we're all about, but also to promote institutions as being a public good. And this, I think, is what the Chancellor is doing. Where would we be in the life of Fort Worth without, without Tarrant County College graduates? Foundations should do self-assessments and have a dashboard to success, similar to what we do. And I made the comment, you can't over-train the board. Very true. So I think, in terms of, talk about Foundation Board or any board, but the two things that I came away with, I think, are the, the need to have more board development on the Foundation side. And the other thing that we talked about many times was the alignment of a purpose of the Foundation and the college. We need to be aligned. We need to be focusing on, on doing, accomplishing the same goals and objectives, have basically the same mission. And we do, but I don't think we have that conversation, that we, we should be having the communication. And I think we're on a road to improvement on that, but I think we need to be working more on that, so. Anyway, it was a very good conference. We had it at absolutely fantastic, beautiful facility right on the edge of the Pacific Ocean, and we, we were going from morning, noon, and night, and we never even got down to, we could see the ocean, but that's, that's all, we were really busy, and everybody worked very hard. So I appreciate, Joe, that you invited me to go to that, so, thank you.
We appreciate you representing us there. All right, moving on to the agenda, or back to the agenda, item number five. I would ask the Board's approval for 5A, or consideration and approval of recommendations for 2018-19 faculty promotion and rank and the awarding of tenure. And B, consideration and approval of course material fees for inclusive access text program.
Move to approve.
To approve, Mr. Heath.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Evans. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, college presentation, Student Accessibility Resources. Dr. Juvenini and Dr. Coppola.
President Madam, Dr. Juvenini, members of the Board. It's my honor to represent the college and talk to you tonight about Student Accessibility Resources. The name you might know by is Disability Services, Disability Student Services. In 2016, that title was changed, and that's a national movement, to shift from the negative focus of a disability to more about accessibility. If you, and all of you have been on many of our campuses, and everyone that works at this college, what we are so proud of is the caring that people take in taking care of our students. And there's no group better than this group, and I want to, I'm glad to be able to talk about them tonight. I've got my little clicker here. Of course, we're going to be talking about our goals, how, and I'll be talking tonight about how SAR is related to our goals as one college. Student-ready college, there's no better group that meets students where they are, as the Chancellor would say, as this group. And also, we serve the community. The principles that are affected by SAR, among, among all of them, but the two particular ones are the Integrated Student Success Model. We have dedicated significant resources that are focused on student success and the student experience. Given a welcome and consistent, and consistent experience to all of our students, equity is very important within the college. The mission of the Student Accessibility Resources is really one to equal access of education for students with disabilities. This is about equity more than, just as much as it is about equal access, that all students have possibilities. We are also driven by some guiding legislation. It's important to understand that students with disabilities must self-identify and provide appropriate documentation before we can serve them on our campuses. It's a little shift than when they come to us from the high schools. As a college, you, our district support is where it all starts for SAR. Of course, Dr. LeBlanc, Dr. Bourne, and Deborah Schall in administration, and then we have two learning diagnosticians, Dr. Larry Gillum and April Watson-Horton. What's important to understand about the learning diagnostics is that this is an evaluation for students based on referrals from the coordinators of SAR. And this is a unique service that TCC offers that eliminates a significant expense to our students. In the past, students had to go out and pay to get diagnosed and then bring the information to us. Some years ago, with achieving the dream, what we wanted to get students in equity, we decided to go ahead and bring some diagnosticians here on campus, within our district. On the campuses, we have coordinators, and also, and I would like for them to stand, they are here, to be recognized. The coordinators also form a council of their own, and Caleb Cameron is on Southeast Campus. He chairs that, and he's my lifeline tonight in case you ask any questions, okay? Kimberly Carter at the Trinity River Campus, Kimberly Eason Northeast, Paula Manning, and Yolanda Thomas is home with a sick child tonight, or she would be here. We also have sign language interpreters and note takers on staff within our district. The accommodations that impact learning. Examples that we have is alternate test-taking, note-taking, of course, alternate format texts, and card services for our interpreters. We have to have two interpreters for every student in every class, and every event we have interpreters, and assistive technologies. Our offices on our campuses, thanks to facilities, and our coordinators have been updated to meet our students' needs. Not only do the offices have privacy for students and families to meet, but also we have testing centers for students that don't want to take the set class, that the disability shows that they have to come to a testing center, but in a private environment, in order to take their test. We are seeing a significant increase in the number of students that are requiring services from SAR, a 14.6% increase since 2015. We don't see this declining at all, as students are becoming more and more aware of the disabilities and of our services that we are offering. What's interesting is if you take one academic year, you can see that most students in the fall are the ones that declare and that find our offices. And then it goes down by spring and by summer. And this is the data, now that we're collecting data on these students, we're going to be trying to find out why the number is going down, are the students leaving us, or they do no longer need the services, because they're getting more comfortable on campus. There are a variety of reasons why students visit our SAR office and have disabilities. The primary disability that you'll see is learning, at 28%. And this represents the most common disability amongst students registered and encompasses disorders in the areas of reading, writing, written expression, and math. Many students fall into multiple categories also. We do a number of outreach activities, too. We don't just sit in offices around here. You know, we like to have, use our facilities. We're real proud that the SAR is active in promoting the ongoing education and awareness of their services. Presentations are given to all faculty, to help faculty with students that are in their class, to help refer them maybe to the SAR office, also to staff. Disability Awareness Events, we have many events on the campuses. High school transition is a very important one, because it's really, that's a lot for the parents, too, because it's, the services that they might get in the high school are different than the services they'll get at the college. And we have to make sure that we explain that to everybody. We are a college. And the Community Resource Fair is there, though. We have gotten some comments. We just want to share two of them, that the students, and this is, we get a lot of these in my office. I have never been treated so well, and they truly care about the students at TCC. We are really a caring institution. Many of us that are here have worked in multiple institutions, and the one thing that sticks out is what we do to let the students feel like they're, they're wanted on the campus, and that they matter to us, as mattering as a grave. And that's why so many students stay on our campuses. And we, and our people actually go the extra mile for our students. What we have are, I'm going to go, you can read this while I talk. What we're proud of with all of our staff is we take ownership of student issues. When a student comes to you with a problem, we don't just pass them off to someone else. We take ownership of that problem. Parents are so important to the success of their students and as a partner, and they are very excited to get started. They call it a journey with their students, because it's the first time they feel like they're doing well on there. We have many bases club, campus-based clubs and organization. On the Southeast Campus, three years ago, one of our students with disabilities, ADHD, she started a learning differently club, for students with learning differences. Amazing. I went and talked to her, and she wanted to have a group of students, let students, let faculty understand what it's like to have a learning difference and sit in their class. Very popular on our campuses. We always got the dogs, of course, and the people that clean up after the dogs, and then move on. Also, SAR partners with our web communications and our Office of Institutional Diversity and Inclusion to provide a TCC District Professional Development Day focused on the impact of accessibility on student success. So with that, the more we can talk about our students to folks, the better. These are very bright students that can't get lost in the shuffle, but really have to be, that can excel well, and they do excel well. And you've seen them in Phi Theta Kappa, you've seen them in many student organizations, and you've seen them all across the stage. And with that, we're open to questions, and I have help for questions.
I don't think I realized we had diagnosticians in-house. Are they on one campus, or do they move from? Are they on one campus, or do they move from campus to campus?
I believe they're at district office, and then they're taking... I'm going to have, this is Caleb.
Yes.
You see how quick he's behind me?
Introduce.
All right, I'm standby. Yes, I'm Caleb Cameron, I'm the coordinator at the Southeast Campus. So yes, they're district learning diagnosticians who are available to respond to referrals from our offices, so they kind of float around the district and meet students at whatever campus is most convenient for them.
Great. And trustees, you all have brochures that Dr. Coppola printed your places earlier. Dr. Evans?
Caleb, in regard to note takers, that kind of thing, do you have X amount on each campus, or how is that coordinated from campus to campus?
Right, it's based on the needs of our students, and we provide that service in a variety of different ways. We loan digital audio recorders to help students to ensure that they have access to the information in the class. If there is no note taker, we hire students, that's a big employment opportunity for many of our students. Ideally, those enrolled in the class can provide copies of the notes. We also have staff that we hire for outside note takers that can fulfill that need as well, so all driven based on the need of the student.
Excellent, thanks.
You're welcome.
Do the students go, come to you, or are they identified by the teachers, or both? How does that work?
So the students do have to self-identify as having a disability, or they suspect that they have a disability, so that might be one way that they visit us. Many of our referrals come from faculty who are working with a student, and they might make some observations that they see characteristic of some kind of disability, they might share information about our office as a resource. We also get referrals from our counselors and advisors as they meet with students and learn more about their educational experience. We've worked and collaborated a lot and presented on that topic, just so folks feel equipped to make that referral, and also an appropriate way to do so.
Yeah, because in the high schools, there was lack of funding for some of these disabilities, and that's changed now, but still, maybe those students haven't identified in that area, so.
That's right, and we do a lot of outreach partnership with high schools to ensure that those transition counselors are aware of our services, and they often come, visit our campus and our office, contact us, so that that transition can be seamless for those students, and they're aware before they graduate of our office as a resource, and also to help the student realize that that support is still available. You know, it might look differently at the college level, but there's still support available for them, and so a disability doesn't need to be a reason for them not to persist into college.
Okay, is there any special funding for that, or is that, we just do that?
That is part of our guiding legislation.
We have funding for that.
Yes. Yes, we provide the services, yeah, through our budget.
Grants for? Is it grant money, or is it, it's obviously in the budget? And Kerry Tunsen's program, I'm sitting here trying to think of the name of it, is it in addition to this?
Yeah, so that's through Community and Industry Education, that's our Autism Spectrum Program. Yes, and some of our funding comes from the Perkins Grant, vocational grant for our career and technical education students, and so that can provide support when it comes to interpreting expenses, as well as note-taking assistance, different things like that, and we're always exploring ways to cover expenses that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And everyone involved. All right, item number seven, consideration and approval of termination of the City of Arlington Tax Increment Finance District Number Four. Dr. McLendon?
Good evening, Chairman, Chancellor, Board. TIFF4 in Arlington has completed their work, and they're asking if we would like early termination. So it's asking this board, they've done all the work they have, the only thing that was left is a little bit of money to pay their last bond part, and so they've asked us if you would grant that permission to do that, and also to terminate that, and that means that at the termination of the TIFF, the money would come back to TCC.
Do you have other questions?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, I was looking at the supporting materials, and the City of Arlington has supported the development of the Lake Highlands Quarter along Interstate 20. I'm familiar with the Highlands Quarter. Is Lake Highlands a different part of that?
Just a minute.
The Highlands Quarter is that area that has the shopping next to the Park Mall?
Yeah, it is.
So I didn't know if there was a separate area called...
No, it's a 320-acre development, and it is, the improvements include Matlock Road, the extension of the Center Street from Abrock to I-20, and the construction center of Street Bridge, and extending to the point of Bardren Road. So that's the total.
But is it called Lake Highlands?
No, it should be Highlands.
I'm not familiar with Lake Highlands, but I'm saying there may be a separate area that I'm not familiar with.
Not at all.
It's...
It should be the Highlands.
Highlands.
I think it's typo.
Yeah, it's on the east side.
Well, I'm just wondering if that needs to be corrected, or if there's a separate area that's called that.
I'll have to check into it.
Okay.
Mark, you covered this in governance, but would you make a comment about, you know, what the TIFF accomplished?
Yes.
Like in terms of the tax assessments?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, this was a very successful TIFF. This TIFF had an appraised value when it started approximately of $17 million. Right now, it's sitting on about $230 million. It's improved this entire area, it's certainly improved the roadway, and it's also improved the center of it. And so it's bringing a lot of benefits to that area, it's also bringing employment to that area, and it's also, I mean, not that everything economic is important in the world, but it's also going to have a higher tax value for Tarrant County College and the other areas.
So do we need to clarify?
I would say that when we make a motion, that it should be subject to clarification of the area that we're talking about.
Do you want to do that, Dr. Patrick?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve based on the clarification of the name of the quarter, to be sure that we have the correct legal name.
Yes, ma'am, I will check with Mr. Peng.
I'll second it.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Item number eight, consideration and approval of deductive change order contract for roofing restoration per the district-wide roofing assessment, a credit in the amount of $57,908.55. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Ayala, any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine, consideration and approval of deductive change order to contract for space renovation at West Fork Tower on Trinity River Campus, a credit in the amount of $65,765. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded. Dr. Evans, questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are the two easy ones, when we're getting money back. I would remind the audience, if you're new to us, we have what we call a governance committee meeting, and we go through the agenda and usually get our questions asked and answered at that time. Item number seven being an exception, because we didn't have our Arlington person there, we didn't know the difference. So now we are getting ready to spend some money, starting with item number 10, consideration and approval of expenditure for relocation and reconfiguration of record storage system to the district's multipurpose center in an amount not to exceed $140,000. I would like to call on the chancellor at this point.
Yes, I'll address this as this is a change from the governance item that you reviewed last week, and the change is this, last week that item read not to exceed $125,000. Today it reads not to exceed $140,000. And the reason for that is this, the original thought in the bid was that the $125,000 not to exceed would take care of the purchasing of the shelving, knowing that we would have to pay to move the records as well, that was not part of the item. Tonight, that is part of the item with the same vendor, with the one vendor, so one bid not to exceed $140,000. So the difference in the item itself is that the scope of work has changed to go beyond just the purchasing of the shelving, but also to the relocation of the records. The relocation of the records was not in the item last week.
So the recommendation, Ms. Petty, is for $140,000 not to exceed. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, seconded. Dr. Evans, any questions about the change in particular, or this item in total? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration and approval of cooperative purchasing network agreement for roof restoration per the district-wide roofing assessment in the amount of $1,085,666.10. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, seconded.
Second.
Dr. Patrick, any questions to Ms. Petty? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Petty.
Thank you.
For coming to the podium.
Appreciate it.
Monthly financial report, Dr. McLendon.
Good evening again. Okay, our financial statements, this is, we are in our fifth month, so we will look at expenditures greater than 50%. Five months would be 42%. If we look at our total revenue, it's 73% compared to 42% budgeted, so we are ahead. This month, we wanted to note that our maintenance tax, we received $110 million, which was a little more than we anticipated. However, our total income is sitting on $258 million, which is, it is, as expected, a little bit higher. We're going to look at, we're going to review expenses greater than 50%, and the majority of those items will be, are the ones that are, have encumbrances. If we look at our overall education expense, it's 40.9% instead of against a budget of 42%, but I want to remind everybody that we also have encumbrances that reflect costs for more than one period or everything. All right? Okay, so now we're going to look at our investments, okay? We have, in our pools, we had an increase of $61 million, okay? That refers to the $110 million that we got in from our tax money, so we have an end in balance of our pools of $213 million. Short-term, we purchased one short-term, which short-term means anywhere from 60 days to 365. We purchased $20 million there, all right? And as far as U.S. agencies, which is the lower part, we purchased two, we purchased one federal, $10 million, Federal National Mortgage Association, and we also purchased $10 million from the Federal Home Loan Association, and you will notice the higher interest rates, all right? So we have a beginning balance of $281.4, we have an increase of $101.2, an end in balance of $383 million. Our yield is 1.42, our, the T-bill, one-year T-bill is .9, and our WAM is 326. Any questions?
Questions?
Dr. McLendon?
Thank you, sir.
Is any of that extra $110 million because people paid taxes last year as opposed to this year or the next year to avoid the new tax law problems?
No, not at all. What has happened is, we looked at that, and we were happy, I'm glad that you asked the question, because our staff, we analyzed, we actually looked at where we were last year as far as total income. We were at 71.7%. So we did receive a little bit extra, there's about $15 million more in taxes at this period than we did last year. It just depends on how the money is coming in, that we will get it for the next three months. But it has, it just, that's just the way the collection is going, there is no special reason. We are increasing every year, but we don't have a special reason why that, or I can look into seeing if there's any special reason why we have $15 million more in the month of January than we did last year.
Yeah, my concern, obviously, is if they paid early, next year they're going to, it's already been paid, so we want to make sure that we're keeping an eye out so that we don't overspend this year and don't get the revenue next year.
No, I don't believe that's the case, but I can let you know that next month, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Dr. Juvenini, any comments?
Yes, there, in the list of activities last month, I want to highlight three, because there's a theme to all three. All three really do emphasize our connection to the community, but in a very different way, and so you could, I want to draw reference to the breadth, the extension, the far reach that we have. First, on January 27th, at the Cuaderno Casero Foundation Leadership Conference, we held at Trinity River Campus, which was to highlight and show, provide awareness, particularly in healthcare careers, but there were small folks there, and there were medium-sized folks and big folks there in terms of age, and so very successful as it relates to reach. The second would be on February 5th, our signing of an MOU with Midwestern State University, and the significance of that is, is how generous that was as it relates to the providing of opportunity for transfer for our students. And then finally, last Saturday, the 10th, Arlington ISD had dedicated their Career and Technical Center, and the significance of that is, it's a wonderful facility that certainly the Arlington ISD, Arlington students will take career and technical education courses in, many of them in dual enrollment, so our presence will be there in the day, but also with a partnership with the Arlington ISD, that facility will be used by Tarrant County College exclusively in the, once the day ends at 3:00, and into the evening, and then throughout the summer. So three activities in a very short period of time that really emphasize our partnership and our reach in the community in a variety of different ways.
Thank you for representing us there.
I'd just like to comment, I had the opportunity to be at that facility yesterday, and what is taking place there is changing lives. It's an exciting collaboration, and just a wonderful use of our community resources, and very complicated, a lot of moving parts, and it's just working very well. Oh, this is, I wanted to announce that Arlington Collegiate High School, which is housed at the Southeast Campus of TCC, received a $3,800 grant to implement the honor society there, and to pay for the students to be able to belong to that, the ones who are eligible. And so I'm a member of that education foundation, and we surprised Principal Ben Bolan, you can see Dr. Coppola and Mike Sanado with us, and another one of our board members with this presentation of a grant, so we were very excited about that.
Good, thank you. Another partnership with enhancements. Any other comments or questions? If not, we are, excuse me, going into closed session and will likely emerge with a little bit of action. Deliberation of real property, Section 551.072 Texas Government Code. Deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074 Texas Government Code. In consultation with attorneys, Section 551.071 Texas Government Code. Please note that the March 8th Governance Committee meeting will be at 3:00 rather than 2:00, and then our next board meeting is March 22nd. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Madam Chairman, rule of order.
It's kind of like the Senate, you know, I'm, no one's here. I protest against. Maria, don't you write a word, because we don't have a quorum yet.
Okay, we do have a motion to consider. Mr. Greenhill?
I move to grant the Chancellor the authority to negotiate the sale, use, or lease of property located at the Northeast Campus.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Heed, comments, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
It's always a pleasure.
Always a pleasure.